Andy, this could be a long night if I have to communicate with you via chat.
No, we had our microphone muted, that's why you couldn't hear us.
All right, welcome everyone to the June 15 in-person meeting of the Berankin Plan Board. Tonight in attendance, we have, starting down the end, Andy Melnickas, Ron Allard, Jeff Brand, myself, James Jensen, Candace Krantz, Andy Knapp, Town Planner Marcia Gassis, Land Use Manager Assistant Barbara Irvine, and also the Town Administrator Connor McGyver.
Steve and why he's...
I'm sorry, and we also have remotely Steve Diamond and who else? I apologize. That's it. Aston tonight is Buddy Hackett and Donna Masucci as an alternate. So Andrew M. will be a voting member tonight, as Buddy is not here. First up, we'll do the minutes for June 1st. Are there any comments, corrections? Anyone have any comments? Steve?
All good.
All right, hearing no comments, I make a motion to accept the minutes of the June 1st meeting.
Second, motion by Jeff Brand, second by Ron Allard. Well, we'll start down the end, Andy.
Aye.
Andy, aye. Ron Allard?
Allard, aye.
Jeff Brand?
Brand, aye.
James Jensen, aye. Candace Krantz?
Krantz, aye.
Andy Knapp?
Knapp, aye.
Steve Diamond?
Diamond, aye.
Minutes are approved as written. Next up, we have 270 and 273, 2 and 3, 49 GR 21 preliminary review. Owner Anthony Sarah requests by applicant for preliminary conceptual review to construct an 11-lot conservation subdivision with a 670-foot cul-de-sac at 44 Meadowbrook Drive. It is on 58.57 acres. The lot is a general residential zoning district, and I believe we have Barry Guyer here to present.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
Do I need to turn on the mic? Are we good?
Yeah, so turn on the microphone and camera, and I'm going to mute the speakers and microphones. Maybe just a delay.
Oh, that sounds better.
Okay, yeah, that must've been it. Thanks, sorry about that, everybody?
So can we share the C1, Marcia? Do you have that? So again, my name is Barry Guyer, Joneson Beach. I'm here for the applicant Sal Ragoneisi, who's with us tonight. Project is located at 44 Meadowbrook Drive. It's tax map. It actually encompasses three tax maps, 270 lots 2 and 3. There's a sliver here along Meadowbrook Road, which is Lot 2. Lot 3 is the house that actually, or the lot that actually contains the house. And map 273, Lot 49, is the remainder of the property. It's over 58 acres in the general residential zone. It has a large wetland complex on the west side of the project, and it puts Meadowbrook Drive right at the corner there. The intent of the project is to construct a conservation subdivision to include left and single-family lots on a 670-inch cul-de-sac. Lots to be serviced by on-site wells and septics with the cul-de-sac off of Meadowbrook Drive. By putting this in a conservation subdivision will allow us to preserve approximately 47 acres, which will include the large wetland complex at the back of the property. That equates to about 80% of the lot to be preserved. Approximately 21 acres of which will be the upland. So we're here tonight just to get input from the board before we move to a formal submission. So this is a preliminary hearing, so would like to hear the input from the board before we move forward. With that, I'll answer any questions the board may have.
Okay. Questions, Steve, you as well. If you can both chime in or raise your hand, and we'll try to notice you. Anybody want to...
I'll start with a couple of questions. So I want to go back to what you just said about the wetland portion of the conservation area. What percentage of the conservation area is wetland?
So, I don't know if I have that. Well, see, there's 47 total acres. Upland is 20.8 acres. So there's like 27-ish acres, 26 is 26 acres, which are what?
Greater than 50%.
Greater than 50%.
Okay, so the regulations say that of the... That portion that's undevelopable, including, that would include wetlands, can't be greater than 50% of the open space.
I believe that's the required open space.
No.
Okay.
So the total amount, I'll read you the regulation. The total amount of open space that is identified as open water, wetlands, exposed ledge, other terrain conditions that would normally be considered otherwise undevelopable shall not constitute more than 50% of the area proposed as open space within a conservation subdivision. That's Regulation 6.2.2, Parents 3.
Yeah, we can look into that.
Okay, another couple of things I'm curious about. I was looking at Y1, Y2 in OSS sheets. They on lot, I believe it's 4 on the double cul-de-sac, and it's 5 on the single cul-de-sac. There's, first of all, there's a hatch marked rectangular feature. What is that?
It's a concrete pad, I believe, and I can't remember if it's a pool or if it's just a pad.
Okay, so then, yeah, so there's, so apparently, well, I'm also going to ask, because there appear to be, you have a proposed build, and that matches all the other ones, but there appears to already be some structure on the site.
Right, there is an existing house on this lot. Well, I wanted to show that we could actually construct a house with, outside of these setbacks, with the buffers or a lot setbacks. So that existing house is currently within the wetland buffer. So I showed a proposed house, so it showed that it actually would fit outside of the buffer.
Well, if this property is developed, what's going to happen to the existing house?
The existing house would stay.
Okay. So I don't know. I don't understand then, why did you put the other house on a new one?
To show that we could actually construct a house that would meet all the setback requirements.
For yield purpose.
But that's not what you're proposing to do?
Correct.
You're just, you're going, that house will exist within one of the new lots. There will be no building.
Correct.
Okay.
So the existing house would, looks like it fits in the setbacks, but the pool structure does not on the conservation subdivision, correct?
I believe that is correct, yes.
But it's in the well, the newly defined well?
It would be in the well and buffer.
Well, it appears, yeah, it appears to fit within the setbacks on the two cul-de-sac ones, but not on the one.
The setback, not the wetland buffer, right? Well, I guess if that's the plan, it would just, it would require some...
Some, well, I mean, either plan doesn't, it appears here, looking at it, like it's outside of the wetland buffer.
Yes.
The house doesn't, but the pool is.
Right, correct.
Right.
And that pool is also existing, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Chair, there's a comment that came through asking to make sure that the screen represented what you all were talking about. So I think Marcia was scanning through, but if you want to take, if you care to take the time to make sure it comes up here, we can do that. It's up to you.
Sure, sure. What we were just discussing is there on Lot 5, on what's on the screen right now?
Zoom in some.
Okay, so it is Lot 5 on the one.
Yes, on the single cul-de-sac, it's Lot 5, I think under the...
There's two culs. Lot 4 on the yield plan.
Right.
Switch to the yield plan.
The yield, so whoever's looking at this at home, it's the yield plan, there's an issue on the yield plan, which is Y1, Lot 4, and the OSS plan, Lot 5.
I guess people have to understand that the, this is the, this is not what is planned to be built. I think that's what people are having at the right time.
The yield plan isn't...
Is not what's...
Is not what's proposed to be built.
Right, any other questions?
A quick question. Access to the property. The road there has Meadowbrook Road in return, and then there's access to the property, the piss beyond the property. Is that?
Access.
Right.
Looks like Meadowbrook goes this way, and then you're accessing the property again. It's very pink.
This...
Is that on the, is that on your property or off your property?
So, this is actually a separate lot, that's Lot 2, and that is, extends out to this whole frontage.
Okay.
We will access through our current property.
Okay, answer my question.
It's a strange little sliver of a lot there.
And you have only with that lot?
Yes.
There is a lot of discussion from the road agents about bringing banks of the development out right into the corner. His suggestion is that you make it a three-way stop. Was any consideration given to a design that would not require the intersection right in the corner?
No, from my perspective, that's, that's location. You move it down the road away from the corner, and you have a safety issue, in my opinion. I think it would be better to have actually made that a three-way stop.
What kind of impact does that have on traffic on Meadowbrook?
Three-way stop? You can have a, I'm not a traffic engineer, you can have a look at it. But I think if you move the intersection to the north of that, you can have a sight distance issue on the...
So what is the distance between the corner of Lot 1 and the corner of the property? You've got a 100-foot setback for the conservation buffer.
So I think, what's the minimum sight distance, 300? 400?
Okay.
Might have to look.
I mean, the three-way stop, I mean, would address some of the comments about speed on that road.
I definitely...
My suggestion is they actually have engineered, designed the road layout to meet the standards and not let's like guess at it. I think, I think they have to have a new requirement that the engineer design the road intersection. Appreciate the comments from the road agent, but I think that needs to be completely engineered and designed appropriately based on our regulations.
Right. But if you're going to have people coming out into the corner of a roadway, you are going to have to do something. You just can't have people driving out developing on Meadowbrook, simple of a thing. So yeah, it's going to have to be done, but it is going to have some impact on the flow of traffic in Meadowbrook. And I don't know anything else, how much traffic there are.
It's a cul-de-sac with a posted speed limit, I S R of 20 miles per hour. It literally is a native that should be going at a slow speed.
Well, I think one of the others made a comment that that's not necessarily...
Right, it's a cut-through for, to avoid the late traffic.
I would doubt that, but it's possible.
Yeah, I've done it.
Mr. Chair, just so you know, Steve Diamond has his hands up when you're ready for him.
Yes. Steve, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Oh, I'm hearing myself, myself. Just take the headphones off. There we go. So I noticed from the JIS maps that the wetlands in the far side are prime wetlands, so I'm glad that you are staying away from that part. I also noticed, I mean, there's no official flood maps that would say that this area would flood, but I also know that the official flood maps are not necessarily up to date. So I wonder how many feet up from the wetlands the buildings are, and if they have basements. And finally, if you can remember each of these questions, the JIS map points out that near the entrance at Meadowbrook Road, that is agricultural soils of local importance, not super amazing ones, but happens to be the exact same thing I have on my property, so it's not terrible. I wonder if there's any way you can encourage or directly utilize some of that space, either as green space or encourage agricultural use in some slight way in where it's most amenable. Thank you.
Regarding the elevation of the house, the wetlands are approximately 170, elevation 170. The houses in the existing, where the existing elevation where the housing is approximately 180. So we're about 10 feet above the wetlands at that location. So they will have basements. We don't see an issue with that. And regarding the green space or the prime agricultural, we can review that and see if there's any additional area there that we can preserve or utilize as green space. There is a 100-foot green space buffer that's required in front of the property.
Well, people, all basements, they remember the requirement there is it's too nasty. So you have to aware that the basement can be considered a store.
Meeting.
Two floors above the basement.
They cannot walk out basements, but there's a certain percentage that has to be underground.
Yeah.
Oh, I...
One, two stories above basement.
And you can't expose, well, yeah, well...
And there'll be, there'll be full engineering of the roadways and drainage that would come soon, so we're going to know more about stormwater, if that answers your question, Steve. And did you see the 100-foot buffer on the roadside?
And just, I think you misheard me slightly. It's not prime agricultural soils, it's just of local importance. I just know that when houses are built, houses' infrastructure are built over those things, it might preclude it being used for any kind of agricultural purpose indefinitely. So this is the chance to perhaps adapt slightly where infrastructure is placed to allow for the potential for food production in the future.
Actually, I want to take some of the ones that Marcia found here. So I'm looking at, you know, this conservation, I've already brought up that, you know, the undeveloped area has to be less than 50%, which you don't know. Well, basically, like you said, it appeared that beats that right here. Also, looking at this, you've got open space, and I look at where the open space is outside the buffer, and it's only, seems to be a relatively small amount that isn't wetland. And that big, the largest area of open space is actually surrounded by wetland. So I mean, how usable is this conservation area? How are you going to access that?
Well, there is a woods road out to that part area. I mean, our reading of regulations tends is to preserve the wetland area. So this is a wetland area that has, as one of the numbers indicated, has prime well associated with it. So this allows us, the prime well is located on the far western side of it. This development will allow us to preserve all of that prime well and well, which is important in conservation, as well as develop the property to its potential.
Okay, so, so that the primary purpose with the open space in this particular case is not for, or would there be public access or no?
We would, most likely, we haven't discussed this, it's a preliminary hearing, so we haven't discussed whether it would be public access, but it would obviously be access for the people that the homeowners are living.
Would you be providing an access to them?
We're looking into that, yes.
Would it be developable against open space? That's... So... For 6.2.2. No, you would never be able to develop them.
Right, that's the job, we're talking about the percentages have to work differently. That's something they got to look into.
The calculation, that number one, because you'd have to get a weapons crossing. You'd have to access problematic space. You'd have to get a weapons crossing even open.
Right, and it's, yeah, it's not about being developable, it's about the percentages of developable, of quality.
But with those concerns expressed, I also know that it is a value to preserve the wetland.
Correct, absolutely.
So...
That's the whole point of the conservation subdivision.
Is right. But that we, but we still got to meet the requirements that are in the regulations. Even if the intent that we think it's a worthy attempt to preserve these wetlands, we still need to meet the regulations.
Correct. Anyone have?
I was just going to comment on that. Even looking at it, it's a little bit of a stretch of the use of that conservation subdivision kind of guideline, because you're, you're overstretching the fact that you wouldn't be able to develop this space anyway. So by forcing it into a conservation subdivision to get your development in there, it's really kind of stretching the intended use of the conservation subdivision.
And I think that's exactly...
Oh, I agree.
Well, that's the point of the percentages.
Right.
Because you wouldn't be able to build this many houses if that was all wetlands, if you didn't have the percentages. You know, we understand that we're conserving quality, you know, land, but you really, the numbers don't work as far as a yield plan if that's not buildable land.
What was the percentage? I don't think it was a tremendous difference between, what was the...
It was less than 50%. It was 27 acres.
Yeah, but we're close to 50%.
Yeah, I bet they are pretty, yeah.
My reading of that was that you had to have 50% of the required open space to be up. So my reading is wrong, if your interpretation is right. So we're close.
I'd have to reread it.
But we, I believe we can hit that mark, as we're saying, but I'm saying...
Well, I don't, I, okay, I don't know how you interpret, shall not constitute more than 50% of the area proposed as open space, as anything but that.
I'm not arguing with you, I'm saying I miss you.
Yeah, so we just have to look at that, you know, before we come back. Was there some? I just wanted to give the opportunity, Conservation Commission didn't comment on the application, so give them an opportunity to speak.
Hi, I'm Ken Grossman, I'm Chair of the Conservation Commission. Commission sent me in person since it's preliminary. I just wanted to listen to the discussion before raising questions. The first question that is similar to what you suggested today. The generic question is, what are the natural resources that you wish to preserve by your conservation mission? Wetlands are valuable, not just because they're wet, but because of what they contain, in terms of wildlife or plants, and you know anything about that. Similarly, for their non-wet part, what do you worry about the natural resources? Why is it important to protect these natural resources?
We think, yeah, we have to come upon last seven, if that's what you're looking at.
Yeah, I think, the Conservation Commission said... Two other questions. One is a simple one, the Oyster River Advisory Equities, well, I advise you, like you're in the Oyster River area, and it's an organization that you have a look at that also. Do you know that in Michigan?
I mean, I do know that we are in the Oyster River Advisory area, but this project wouldn't require their, per regulations. We can't go talk to them.
I think we can, just give them the heads up. The third one, once this is, once this open space is preserved, who's going to keep an eye on that to make sure that they do see? Who's going to monitor the open space?
Well, in this case, the intent is to have the homeowners association hold the open space, so it would be up to them to...
Okay, I, I, full disclosure, Conservation Commission applies in that respect. In the past, there have been situations where the association didn't monitor it. Or frankly, in this one case, that you're already disappeared. They didn't reform, never had anybody needed it again. That's probably also...
So would you suggest that the Conservation Commission holds some part of the year, I guess?
We could have a conversation.
Thank you. You know, I will note that there is, I don't believe there's any requirement to monitor said open spaces, no more than there's a requirement to monitor your property as you own it from things of that nature.
I understand.
I just don't want to imply a burden that's not there. It's a good idea, but it is to be noted that it's not a requirement of our regulations. But to, if you feel it pertinent, to put in some sort of mechanism.
If you don't mind, another question or comment. There were, there were some comments that folks had submitted, and one of them specifically called out the fact that they had a warranty deed that ran to the river, but the property markers or property survey lines that you're using are beyond.
So that, yeah, we actually are aware of that issue. There's discrepancy in deeds. So one deed shows it going as a straight line, and another deed says to follow the river. So we have to resolve that discrepancy. We're going back, you know, we have to dig further back and determine exactly which one's correct and why somebody showed one line and another person showed another.
Well, assuming all of that has to be sorted out before we would weigh in on a plan. Because that's going to change your yield plan and your calculations and all of that.
So did you use that property line, the one on the other side of the river as calculation?
We, we used the deed that was for the property. And we get the preliminary from you guys tonight, which is the straight line. Now, that may or may not be wrong. So we're digging further to determine why there's a discrepancy.
The regulations specifically say that conservation subdivisions can be utilized to protect wetlands, which is your primary intent. Given the location of that area, and as Mr. Hap already brought up, that you'd have to get a special permit to cross the wetlands to get to that open space. Is it realistic simply to say that open space is there and developable, but we're going to we're going to restrict access to that. That's not going to, if people aren't going to utilize that.
I'm sorry, I don't get you.
So do we want people across the wetlands to get out to that open space or not?
There is a woods road there, so they can access. I don't think, I mean, in, in wetlands, you can walk through wetlands, you know, most of the year. So to say that you can't, you know, hike through here.
Well, where is that?
There is.
And that is part of the regulations, safe and convenient pedestrian access.
Well, and that's what I'm trying to determine is what's the intent as far as usage of this six way hearing.
Well, obviously it's passive, which means, you know, hiking trails, that nature. So there is an existing woods road that crosses from the big upland area and kind of jogs between the upland areas on the north side of the property and accesses the large upland area.
Is it actually shown on the plan or are you just pointing it out?
Yeah.
It's shown on the C1, if you want to go back to the existence.
That's what you're talking about.
Correct.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
There is a find out.
Marcia, look on the screen, move your cursor along this, so folks at home can see.
Oh, this, oh, okay, there it is.
Yeah, you can follow the tree line.
Well, so not always actually.
There are going to be assholes in this. So, so if your intent is the woods road would be utilized in that area, then you would have to provide access, it looks like, through lot six or seven, or maybe in between. Be able to lies that woods road for absence.
Currently, it comes through lots 10, 9, 8, 7, 8, 7. If you were, if you are looking up the way that went through there.
Yeah, my, my point is that is we intend to use it as passive access, passive recreation, which means based on walking.
For just the owners of the lots in the subdivision.
Right, so they can obviously walk through the wetlands 95% of the year. And we can provide an access that would connect them to the woods road as well in the, you know, in the future.
Yeah, just trying to get a feel for, because because one of the, you know, talks about the purpose is preserving wetlands. Wetlands, those are upstream quarters are important. They also talk about that this will be to permit active and passive recreational use of an open space by the residents and/or the general public. And so I'm just trying to get a feel for this. Because there's actually those two are somewhat in competition, given the nature of what we're trying to preserve, which is the wetlands.
That runs contrary to having large numbers of the public coming into that.
Yeah, it says and/or, I believe. So they would, obviously typically the homeowners in a development like this would prefer not to have the public have access to it, but have access to it for the homeowners, which limits the amount of people that would access it and any potential for people that aren't respectful of the area to be accessed.
But going back to my previous comment, you, you're still going to have to provide access to that area for the residents.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, there it is, a buffer behind all the houses that connects.
Should be a hundred.
Yeah, should be a hundred. You know, there's a buffer they get, but if you run a long way around, you know.
Yes, yes, you don't know what that area is like out there. And he's saying there's already a method of access, which is this woods road that would be preserved for residential foot track. So, and, and that would be, and you'd probably want to minimize people cutting separate trails through conservation buffer to access the area.
Which leads me to one of my questions. It's, do you know if there's existing snowmobile trails on the property?
I can't tell if there are. We'll check into that, I do not believe there are.
No. Just as, snowmobiling is a huge part of bear culture, in my opinion. And much of the trails do get eaten up from development. And they keep open space and connectivity for wildlife as well as the recreational use of snowmobiles. So when I see an opportunity, if there's a trail there, I'm not implying to add impact, but if there's a trail there, it's, I think it's important to the town to keep those, those accesses available.
I will look into it, speak to the product owner.
Thank you. I, I think if you're going to provide access to the, to the open space, it may be an easy requirement to, that the access that across the property, the access that will trail. So I think, you know, that person owns all the access to the trail. And there's no easement ring for the rest of the residents. See if you give him his rights to say, no, you can't cross my property, access that.
Oh, yeah, we'll either leave a sliver between actual lots or an easement across the lots.
And that's what I'm thinking, is a sliver that's attached.
Into the right of it.
Right.
Yes. Yeah, we're on the same.
Yeah, I know, I know only one example where it was an easement and the person just planted trees and hidden so you can't get through it. He caught me at the side of it.
With the, so you've got the buffer, the, the 100 foot perimeter buffer, but between Meadowbrook and the development, what's your plan for a visual screen? Vegetated buffer in there to screen this?
We, that's why we're here, is kind of discuss this. We'll leave any vegetation we can, there is that 100 foot that we can't touch. The access is, for this property is at that corner. So we wouldn't impact any more than what's absolutely necessary, the vegetation on Meadowbrook. I think it's vegetated current.
All right, I, I don't know that particular location that I haven't gone to look at yet, but so I think that as part of the development of plans though, you need to take a look at and look at what the requirements are, 60 from 2.6. And and then, and so come in with the plan, basically a landscape plan for that buffer area showing what the existing vegetation is and any changes that you want.
And I, yeah, and I guess it includes some public comments as well. We find that there's inadequate buffers that may need to be addressed down the road. Keep that doorjar.
Have you ever had a problem with buffers?
Usually.
Two years, it's all the last.
Oh, and then any waivers you're going to need, you know, looking specifically at that house, that house is going to stay existing on a lot, you're going to need waivers from, because it's no longer going to be the wetland setbacks, you're going to need waivers surrounding that house, those structures, if that's the intent to keep that, that structure there. Not tearing down big floor. I can't say how those will turn out, but we'll have to address those case by case as we look at them.
It'd be grandfathered.
It won't be grandfathered on some of our subdivision law.
Yeah, but that will, you're not going to, you're not going to make the. But that you can leave as is. The buffers will still be there, but.
We, yes.
Expand or change.
If we choose to.
Um, I actually, I think it's part of the regulation that, that is.
They can subdivide it into a non-formal use and then add houses.
But you're not going to change the.
The house structure itself.
The house structure itself.
The way I extrapolate that is that you could have the house half on one property, half on another property and leave it there because it's existing.
That's not the same, that's not.
No, we still have to meet our lot setbacks.
Yeah.
Which is the current lot setbacks. It doesn't meet the, the wetland buffer setback and it won't in the future, but that's grandfathered. But we'd still have to meet our lot setbacks for frontage and side setbacks.
Right. And that pool structure.
And, and that structure if it remains.
All right, I'm just implying if there's any waivers needed for any of that stuff to stay, if it's not applied, that's, it's just on the stone, yeah.
One of the butters had mentioned that in this particular area in, in the conservation area and, and where some of the proposed lots are, that there's a significant amount of wildlife, turkey, deer, red fox. I have one more in my back there. So what is your plan, what, what is the impact of wildlife? Mr. Grossman's talked about for a while, but what about the, the wildlife? What, what is going to be the impact? Are you impacting any breeding or testing areas? And what would be your plan during construction to preserve and protect the wildlife?
To our, to our knowledge currently, we're not impacting any of the wildlife occurring with the proposed plan. We do, our project limits to, I'm just saying from what I know, which I don't know what the wildlife situation down there, which I indicated before. So we can do a wildlife study, but we are developing the vicinity of the existing houses. We're preserving remainder of the property, which is a huge wildlife, which I agree with. It's, it's a large area for a wildlife quarter, has uplands and wetlands which wildlife can access and travel through. So we, this is the purpose of the conservation subdivision, is to limit development on smaller area and preserve the remainder of that highly sensitive areas, which is, I think, exactly what we're doing. So I think we are meeting requirements, just like you said. It has hard areas of, hard areas of wetland and highly protected, which is perfect for wildlife, for wildlife.
I, I agree. So the impact in the conservation area itself, I mean, you wouldn't expect it to be significant, although you buy the construction of the housing lots and the houses. You are taking some of that area away. I don't know what is in that particular area right now. You are going to change travel paths.
Potentially.
Potentially. And it's just, these are things that we don't know. We might guess that there's minimal impact, but like to see something more definitive as, yes, we went out there, we walked the land. We saw, no, in particular, one person brought up that there's a big area of broadsway hawks that have been out there, that have been already been displaced by logging. I don't, I don't, has there already been some clearing or just go ahead and go on?
I would have to look into it.
So, so some type of evaluation to say, hey, we're not going to have a significant impact.
There, there is legal for some, for, it's a logged property.
Yeah.
That's what happened, that there was a, there was a logging that, that took place. I, I want to say there was a logging, but yeah. That's not something in the planning board evaluates that's.
No, no, I understand. I'm just saying they brought up that, yeah, okay, there is wildlife out in the area. Just some type of evaluation.
Yeah, I mean. We're developing a piece of private land while maintaining all that upland and wetland in the back of it. That is important to be.
Agree.
So we're limiting our impact while developing the land to the homeowner's ability, which is allowed to be.
But I think what Jeff said and Mr. Grossman as well, it's not not allowing it, it's, it's identifying something that may be there that could, if we could tweak something and save something and not constrict or restrict the use of that, which you're trying to do. But if there is something important in the middle and this lot goes over here and we tweak something a different way, something of more importance can be saved as brought to something of less importance. I think that's where the impact study.
An impact cross study to look at that.
Mr. Chairman, Steve here, in, in terms of the data that we have already. The unfragmented lands map across the street, of course, is the big conservation area that, that's very large. It's a 0 to 500 acres is the unfragmented land area that we're talking about right here. And I would assume near the brook would be the most likely area for significant wildlife activity. By the way, there is someone else with their hand raised. And when we get beyond the conservation aspect, I have a different question.
I'm sorry, Steve, if you want to go ahead and ask your questions as far as, you know, specifics, and then we'll get the public comment as soon as you're done.
Okay, it's unrelated to conservation land, but I wonder, since Marcia mentioned the road is 20 miles per hour Meadowbrook. That's a pretty small road, it sounds like. And there are a whole lot of other houses in the vicinity. I wonder the, if this would be the straw that breaks the camel's back in terms of the need for any improvement to Meadowbrook Road for the additional housing capacity. I'm not quite sure if anyone has an answer on, on if that would be the case. If that road would have to be made bigger because of the additional residents in the area.
Steve, I think that the issue with the road is more the twists and turns in it and that people need to drive slow. I went out and looked, I mean, it, it, it has capacity, but it's certainly very twisty and turny. And, and it does necessitate people not speeding. I think would be the observation. I, I asked, actually contacted DOT because this does, you know, come out onto Route 4 to see what it would, you know, whether it would trigger any issues. DOT said because they had, you know, there's more than one access point. DOT then said that for this many houses, it didn't necessitate from them, you know, any improvements, you know, at the intersection with Route 4. That being said, my biggest concern, and I mentioned that in my staff regulations, is making sure that the, that the intersection is, you know, fully engineered and that there is a safe, you know, construction there. There needs to be some kind of construction plan so that there is some kind of safe, you know, intersection, whether that ends up being a stop or not. I'm not a, you know, traffic engineer, but it does need to be professionally, I believe, designed so that it's safe for, for all the folks that live in the, the very nice neighborhood out there.
That's certainly a good point. I, I just wonder with, if it's a lot of, if there are a lot of curves in the road. I know there might be things in the way. Maybe more shoulder could be added to improve sightlines or otherwise make the road a little straighter where it's not too late to do so.
I need, it needs, but not being an engineer, you know, I, I just think that, you know, that an engineer needs to design it. That would just be my comment.
From, from looking at the map, it's close to a straight shot from four to the turn in the road where the proposed development is, right? It's going to be a right-hand turn off Meadowbrook. You know, so it's pretty much a straight shot, but I'm not discounting the idea that that section might need to be looked at. Um, and it. Your engineers will hopefully identify that, but.
So. To carry, if. To build on what you both said is, I, even though our subdivision regulations only require. Any traffic analysis at 15 units. The fact of the matter is in this particular case, the board can acquire and suggest that you prepare for it, that we wouldn't want to see some kind of traffic analysis. There is a short traffic now, impact analysis and a full traffic, uh, impact analysis. I would. I would think you look at it short, and I would think that the engineer that's trying to design whatever intersection you've got, improve sightlines. And that would also help answer the question, is traffic load going to be sufficient such that during the engineering process can look at. Widing shoulders and other improvements that might be, need to be made in the area of that, uh, that entrance to the development. Yeah, we're going to want to see some kind of traffic analysis.
Cause I, I know the fork down by Lot 12 there is, that's, it's a mess there. You come in there, it's narrow and. You know, you've got your lead foot coming off Route Four and your hammer coming up there and you hit that curb quickly. So it bears looking at. All right. Does the board have any other questions?
Oh, the system where the fire chief says you're going to have to install a 30,000 gallon fire system. I didn't see it on the drawings.
You supposed to yet?
Yeah, okay. But that's going to have to be a feature. And when the engineer is evaluating the roadway, uh, there are, there is a comment with respect to. Road agent wants to see a 15 inch culvert under the entrance, minimum 12 inches of cover and the ditch line adjusted on either side. Accommodate.
Gary, this will need an alteration of train.
Will not.
And what, how, does it just make it?
Yeah, it's actually, I mean, you typically have to get to about a thousand feet of road before you meet that threshold.
So what is that? There, there's another review. What is that one?
Oh, well, the AOT requires 100,000 without you're in the shoreline buffer or 50, you're in the shoreline.
And then there's still a, there is still an evaluation of the wetlands, whatnot of the.
State subdivision, is that what you?
Circle back to that. Um, we'll take the opportunity to open up public comments. We'll, uh. First address those in person. Let me, uh, we'd like to ask a question to the board. I just need your name, address and your question. Sure.
Stand where you are. I'll just point the camera at you and speak up. The microphones are over here.
Okay.
You're good.
My name is Angelina Rizzo, R I S S O, 1143 Meadowbrook Drive, directly across the street on what I call danger curve, which is across from the proposed entrance. To watch guys know, people don't just come off of four. If they're coming home up 125, they're coming in the back way, sitting around that part of the back. I've also had to put large rocks on my lawn because people just cut across it rather than take the curb at a nice speed. But I mean, a lot of the houses is at least 22 vehicles on our lawn because we get a little too tired with the property. Usually not two licensed drivers. That's a lot of long people popping in and out of that intersection, probably at the same time, they will shoot like five-ish or six. It's, it's going to be a lot, a lot more people on that curb. And it's, and I know you guys are going to dress like the best you is, right, basically. But just know that everybody's not coming off Route Four. We do have a lot of people cut from our neighborhood from the circle because it's a nice little ride on the way home. But it's kind of. And there is, on the conservation note, I can tell you, because I'm disabled and I'm home all day, I see every animal. We have deer, we have a game trail active that comes through the wetlands. We saw them last night crossing the proposed street over there, coming through and they go all the way through, you know, and then they cross the street over by the culvert.
Yeah.
And, you know, they have, they've been doing that for years. So then I know there's been a family in there. There's all sorts of wildlife definitely looking to. So I'm glad that you guys are taking that seriously. Everything you brought up is definitely things you can look at. So as far as accessing that open space through those marshlands. That's again, 11 potential families with who knows how many people tromping along through those wetlands, supposedly being nice to them, but that's not always the case if you are. Everybody's good to the end of it. It's, it's a lot more people and. Activity on, on otherwise already quiet street that's, you know, got plenty of family. Yeah, they gotta, they gotta build themselves up. I don't think you really need it.
That's.
Could I ask you? So we talked about, it's going to have to be an engineering evaluation and design for the corner and intersection with the entrance development. The road agent had proposed a possible concept, which was to make that a three-way stop. And, you know, I think I was initially, when I read the comment, apprehensive about impeding the flow of traffic on Meadowbrook by installing the stop signs. However, reading the comments and listening to you. I'm sitting here thinking, wow, putting in stop signs might also, might actually mitigate the problem that you already have with people speaking down the road. What, do you have an opinion about that conception?
Other than my driveway is right where everyone is stopping, I actually think it would probably help. Put it against some stop sign.
Okay.
Biased. But yeah, yeah, we certainly could use somehow on our way, try and slow people down. And, and again, if you're going to have a subdivision there, you're going to need that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Like to speak. All right. If there's anyone that is out there, does it like to comment?
Uh, there are a couple. Stephen Graves has had his hand up. He also added some chat, uh, comments as well. And I guess, Mr. Graves, I'd invite you to, to share anything publicly that you've put in the chat, just to make sure it gets in the record.
All right. So I turned the video camera back on. I'm sorry about the backlight. Uh, yeah. So, so we'll, we'll start with what, what I put in the chat. Um, I, I, I know some of you have said that, that you haven't been out to the, to the area to see it. Uh, and I encourage you that before you make any decisions, that you actually get out to see it. You've all got my address. Feel free to knock on my door. I'll take you for a walk off the backside of your budding property. I'm on 16 Hickory Lane. Uh, it's right on that, on the cul-de-sac right off Route Four. Uh, I would have but what would potentially be lot number four, I believe, and part of lot number five. There's a, there's a handful of concerns I have, uh, one of them being a 200-year-old graveyard, which sits directly. Uh, across from that 100-foot setback. And should there be any concerns there? Uh, as far as to, you know, infringing on that graveyard. The other part of it being the, the clear cut, I, I shouldn't say clear cut, the select cut of the property that has already taken place and wiped out. Just about every stitch of forest that abutted me for, for the better part of a decade. Yes, there will be 100-foot setback there. However, I would almost insist on there being a, not just vegetation. Plant in that 100-foot setback, but a mature vegetation plant that would take place so that it would ensure that. That, 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 that which was wooded before could at least appear that to us again. Uh, that would be, that would be fantastic. I'm much like anybody else who's probably going to speak tonight is going to, is going to express the, the wildlife concern. I'm glad y'all are taking it seriously as well. We absolutely do have bear, fox, hawks. Uh, there's osprey that call that area home. There's, you know, there's, there's a plethora of deer that run through there. And so, you know, taking that into consideration is something that really kind of needs to happen, not only by the developer, but also by the planning board. My, my major concerns really, you know, hinge around that 100-foot of green space because, I mean, if, if y'all saw what was there before versus what's there now. Uh, it looks like a, I liken it to a tornado. I came home one day, didn't even know that they were cutting the trees down. Came home one day and there was a line of, line of 100-foot bullpines that were just completely wiped out and then it just proceeded to wipe the rest of it out. So. Um, I would, I would seriously take that wildlife piece into consideration and the, and the 100-foot buffer. The access road that you guys talked about that's currently there, I didn't even notice that that existed. But I mean, if it is, it, it, it may have been a path at some point that may have also potentially connected to the back of my property here. Um, there's an old overgrown, what appears to be, could be either a footpath or a small snowmobile path that runs out along the ridge line, along Caldwell Brook and out towards that, uh, that conservation area. So again, I'd invite anybody to come on down and take a look. Let's see, I got one more thing, just kind of jot it down here. The. The access by the town to that area, if they deem it a conservation area, is there anything within our guidelines as a town that the board can shed light on maybe? As to that would require them to at least grant access, not just to the residents, but anybody who would have or does currently abut. That which would be a, a new development. Um, that would kind of be like a question that I would have there. The road, um, the, the, the road is definitely a concern. I don't share the same concern as the person who just spoke because I don't live on that corner. Uh, but I've definitely driven that corner a dozen, or dozens of times and I'll, and I'll, and I'll 100% agree to the fact that something needs to be taken care of there because. It's, it, it may not add to a traffic amount, but it's definitely going to add to a, a possible problem in the future with additional houses going in there. So with that, again, I'll, I'll close with, you know, if, if, if any of the board members want to come out, including the conservation commission, because I know they were, they were spoken about there too. Uh, and see it from the other side of, of the, uh, the property line, I'd, I'd invite you to come on out. Thank you, Connor. Thank you for your time. If y'all are speaking, I can't hear you.
Yeah. Pretty out of control. So the, I was just going to ask the, the same question I asked, uh, Ms. Rizzo is. So do you think that making, putting stop signs down there at that corner would help mitigate some of the concerns you have about traffic?
I mean, I, I think Ms. Rizzo's concern is going to be obviously one that's greater than mine because I don't deal with it on a daily basis. Um, I think she would be probably the more apt to be the expert there. But I would agree based on my own knowledge that, yeah, you're, you're probably going to see a benefit to not only Ms. Rizzo's situation, but also to the general situation of that whole housing area out there in general.
I, I only asked because she said, well, you don't live at that corner, but you certainly driven that corner. So.
Oh, I have many times.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
There were a couple of more hands up earlier. The hands are back down. I know Michael House had his hand up and there was also a Katie didn't have a last name. So if you'd still like to make a comment, um, you can raise your hand and let us know that you'd like to speak or if your questions have been answered. Both the hands went back up. So Mr. House was first. Uh, you've got to unmute yourself, Mr. House.
There we go.
Uh, address, if you would.
Yes, I'm Michael House. I live on 48 Serenity Way here in Barrington. I am not a butter of this particular area. Uh, I have driven down Meadowbrook Lane many times. Uh, I would agree that, uh, putting some stop signs in there would probably be, be the best solution. That's a, a very heavily. Populated area. There's lots of kids in that area. Um, anything to go and keep the traffic moving slowly enough so that they don't go and cause any problems would be desirable. This, uh, development is, is kind of like an expansion on the existing development there with Meadowbrook, Morning Lane and Candlestick. Uh, I don't know if that total number of houses in there would meet that DOT minimum for a review. No, you've already checked. Can't, can't hear you. So, um, I'm also going to look.
Did inquire about that and it didn't meet the requirement.
Okay. Probably not by not much, but. Google Maps shows the area as of last year fall. Um, you can go and, uh, look at the area on the, on the tax map where it says tax map seven, uh, 273. Uh, it shows that as, as wetland, but if you look on the, uh, on the overhead, it's actually forested. And it looks like maple trees in that, growing in that area. So it, it's not an open wetland. It's more of a, a forested, a wet forest area. And you can see bare traces of that trail that runs out there on the overhead. So that's all.
Very much.
And then Katie.
Katie.
Hi, thank you. My name is Katie Brows. I'm down here to. Minimize that echo. Okay, um, I live at 95 Old Comfort. And across the. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, can you hear us? Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, I, I was just going to ask, I, I was going, are you the one to send an email or a note into the planning board from?
Yes, my husband sent that.
Cause I was going to read this into the record, but seeing as you're making the comments in person, I don't need to.
Okay, uh, thank you. Yes, I just wanted to make sure that that was noted, that the plans presented seem to, uh, claim. I believe a couple hundred feet of our property as, um, part of their property in order to meet the setback requirements. I believe when we purchased the house, uh, the, that we were told that this property line dispute had already been resolved. So we'll definitely need to get that figured out. Um, I guess my question is, is it incumbent upon us or the current or the landowner who's proposing the development? To settle that line dispute? If it has not already been settled, which I believe it has.
Yeah, it's incumbent on you to do your own due diligence. If they, if their lawyers say that they're right and yours say you're right, you're going to have, there's a dispute still. If they say you're right, then obviously there's no dispute anymore. Um, so.
If I may.
Yeah.
We know, noted the discrepancy. We're trying to determine which one actually is correct. And obviously the chairman was right. And if you don't agree with what we ultimately.
Thank you.
With what we ultimately, our surveyors ultimately agree is the line, then you can go to. A judge or whatever. We don't anticipate it going to that. We're just trying to figure out currently why there's a discrepancy in the two property lines and, you know, what the ultimate line really is. So this, this happens often with properties. One surveyor will do your property, another surveyor will do their budding property and they don't agree. And most of the time surveyors can come to an agreement as to why it was divided that way, why the lines were drawn and. way, why the lines were drawn and, you know, come to a resolution without any issues. But if there, it, it ultimately does become an issue, then that isn't really at the planning boards, you know? That, that's not in their purview.
Okay, thank you. My biggest concern is that, uh, lot number six, uh, as we mentioned before, would not meet the setbacks. Uh, as it is, there's a house there that is, um, very close to the creek. That's another thing that maybe the planning board might want to look into. If more houses are put in there, the wells, um, and, uh, the, the wells and possibly the septics, I'm not sure. Uh, I'm not sure if those would end up being too close to the creek because as far as my knowledge is, on the other side of the, the creek, our line, property line is the threat of the brook. So, that could be an issue.
Thank you. Uh, as far as the wells and septic, they have to meet certain standards.
Okay.
And, and were you referring to the existing house being close to the creek?
Yeah, the existing house, uh, according to our warranty deed does not meet the hundred-foot setbacks, but that was already there when we moved in, so that's not an issue. It was just, it was just a kind of a side comment.
And was there anything else?
That was it. Thank you.
Do we have any other? Uh, it looks like Michael has, oh.
I think that was probably leftover.
Lingering hands.
Um, I think those were all the comments that were chatted in as well.
All right. We are done, well, uh. All right, before we end public comment, I want to read.
If you could, sorry, Jeff. Um, there was one, there's one participant that's on a phone, um, that doesn't have the ability to raise their hand, so if you're participating on a phone and you'd like to enter a comment into the record, you'd have to press star six, uh, on your phone to unmute yourself and you can just speak up, letting us know you'd like to speak. Just joining up passively, that's okay too. Don't see them unmuting themselves. Uh, sorry for that interruption, I just wanted to make sure they, they knew how to use the system, so.
Thank you.
But.
All right. Before we leave public comment, there was, there were two public comments that were submitted via email today. Uh, one is from a ALE arsenal. Uh, it says, hello, due to prior commitments, my husband and I will not be able to attend a meeting in regards to potential development behind our property. We do however, need to express our concerns. We have, had recently moved here, within the past year, to be in a quiet wooded area. We had moved away from New Subdivision Lot to get to an area with more supposition and peace, but the build of a newly constructed subdivision in the conservation area behind us, it will create more traffic, more noise, less privacy, less wildlife our family enjoys seeing in our backyard. That's one comment. And I also have an email here from a Margaret Batson. Says, good morning, I am unable to attend this evening's planning board meeting regarding the property of 44 Meadowbrook Drive, but I want to voice some initial concerns I have regarding the proposed project. The area, number one, the area in question is fairly wet and does abut wetlands. If the project moves forward, what measures will be taken to ensure the wetlands are not negatively impacted? Two, we have a significant amount of wildlife that will be impacted. Already a mating pair of broad-winged hawks have been displaced by the logging that has occurred. Not to mention the negative effects to the breeding slash den areas for red fox, deer, turkey and bear in that area. Number three, there's already high volume of cut-through traffic that doesn't obey the posted 20 mile per hour speed limit through the neighborhood. There are many young families in the neighborhood with children riding their bikes and playing. In this past year alone, in three separate incidents, vehicles while speeding have hit trees, run onto property causing damage to landscaping and mailbox. Either the speed limit needs to be enforced and cut through traffic encouraged to use the traffic circle, or the plants could be re-engineered and access come directly from the forest so it's not to negatively impact the safety of the neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration and I look forward to your response. That hasn't spurred any other comments, we'll close public comment. Further comments or questions from the board?
Yes, I have a little bit, uh, reacting to what Mr. Graves said. I'm in favor of preserving access to the conservation area for abutters as well as the property owners. And, uh, the board will probably remember, uh, from the campground, uh, sidewalk, uh, even leaving mature vegetation doesn't necessarily guarantee, um, good visual buffering. So, uh, that's sort of a separate issue that, uh, I'm sure the abutters would, uh, would want to have a significant amount of visual buffering, uh, in place, not just leaving what's there, but potentially adding and preserving and maintaining, uh, other vegetation or fence, fencing or whatever, whatever is necessary to, uh, have adequate visual buffering for them. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, Steve, I, uh, I agree with you and I brought that up earlier, that the board's explota- expectation is there will be some evaluation of the existing vegetation in a buffer, any landscape plan that will, uh, that will propose what the vegetative buffer will look like. So I, I think we're all in agreement, it's going to have to be something proposed by the applicant, it's going to have to be a landscaping.
I agree. I also want to point out, um, in situations such as this, that, um, we cannot ensure the enjoyment of someone else's property to, you know, abutters' behest. Those woods have been there for a long time and that's great that they've enjoyed them for this long, but it's not their right to continue to enjoy them in the current state. Now wildlife, water protection, um, things of those nature are the purview of the board and the community interest, traffic is, is another one, but, um, the idea that somebody likes a wooded 50-acre lot behind their house as opposed to a living houses is not necessarily a right that an abutter has.
Well, and it, and it also, in this particular case, currently is private property. There is no buffer.
Right.
So they have a right to cut within the area.
Yes.
That would be part of the buffer in the, in the future, but as it stands right now, they can cut basically right up to the property line. So, uh, even though there is that experience, uh, that, that people have currently had that are abutting, that, that isn't necessarily to mean to the project being proposed.
And, and just to set expectations accordingly and at the planning board, we can ask for more visual buffers and we're open to hearing those and we've heard them and, and it'll need to be addressed, but to expect that you prefer wildlife as opposed to homes, is, I agree, but it's, it's not, it's, it's not something that's always realistic. Um, so to keep that in mind, um, you know, nobody wants it to be clear-cut behind their home and I, I can appreciate that, but if that was your property and you had to ask permission to mow your lawn, you'd be very upset about it. So that's how I can put that into context, um, both addressing traffic, um, wetlands, wildlife, stuff like that, we can certainly, um, explore those in depth.
Jamie, I can appreciate that, uh, we can't necessarily say that they have to provide access to abutters. I'm just saying, uh, I think it would be appropriate for them to do so and I would like it if they did.
Jake, that, and that's something I'm, I'm not opposed to at all, um, abutters, there's the discussion of whether public in general, is too much traffic on those sensitive lands and we can have more comment and weigh in on that. Certainly, Ken would have some, you know, insight as to too much traffic on the wetlands, is it good or bad? Maybe just the abutters has access, um, so that future homeowners don't try to prevent the other abutters from coming across, but not public access, where in the past we've asked for public parking so the public can get in there, then the neighbors hate that because there's more cars parked out there and bad people doing bad things, good people doing good things, comes with the, the pros and cons of those things as well. So all things to consider, uh, but certainly the abutter one, we could maybe put that on the list of things to, to look at, you know, those are abutters that are on, on that, maybe granting them access as well as the homeowners, I don't know how that would work out, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a good point, Jamie. I think act, increased access can be increased impacts too. And it needs to be a balance there. So, you know, need to balance those two and, and, you know, providing access, everybody may not be investing in levels.
And I'd like to note, something that I've said many times before, whenever an applicant proposes a project, the board's obligation under state law is to act within the regulations that have been approved, zoning ordinance approved by the voters of the town, the subdivision and site review regulations that we have. If the applicant meets all of the requirements that are in the regulations, then the, the board acts to approve an application. So when people, uh, and, and I understand the feeling and it's okay to express this feeling, say, hey, this is going to be in my backyard and I don't like it and I don't want it. I will have to say though, that we appreciate your feelings. I have a house, I have property in Barrington, I know if somebody built something in my backyard, I probably wouldn't like it. However, with respect to the board's job, in addition to expressing your feelings, if people come in and say, here are concerns, and I have some suggestions that I can give to the developer that will help mitigate these problems and concerns, those are useful things for us to act on. You know, if people come in, the vegetative buffer, I'd already brought it up, but Mr. Diamond did and others, uh, you know, put suggestions on how to do that. We did, Jeff mentioned at the meeting earlier about campground, we got a, we did a site walk with the abutters, we talked about fences and plantings and where things could go. Turned into a residency process, but in the end, everybody benefited. The developer was finally able to come up with plans that mitigated the concerns that people had, we changed buffer sizes, we changed planting and landscaping, so, you know, if people out there have suggestions that, that can, within the regulations, uh, then we appreciate that and, and that's, those are the most helpful things for them.
And on top of that, there are developers that are willing, that just need to hear that and are willing to implement them too. They're not opposed to doing things a different way, they just, they put it on paper the best way they could think of and if they have an idea, there's other developers that have come to town and said, we want this and they've happily done it. Um, so.
And obviously a good majority of the people, the developers that have come in, they listen to the public comments and I will, uh, Meeting House Road is a perfect example. That project changed, you know, 180 degrees from the first proposal that came in to what actually impacted them. And the lion's share of that change was driven by people suggesting, making the developer aware of things and the developer taking people's comments seriously. Mr. Guy, do you feel you have everything you need?
Yeah, I just want to run through and make sure I'm, I'm listening.
So, well, one additional, um... Yeah, uh, one of the things we want to see on the plans, there's a concern that during development, and we had this issue elsewhere, that there'd be, I think the minimum requirement under the regulations, I, I may be wrong, but I think it's 50 feet of crushed stone for an entrance onto the roadway to prevent the, the mud dirt getting into the roadway and, uh, the road agent has, has noted that that's going to be significantly important.
And it surely should have been placed with logging activities.
Yeah.
My understanding, and I don't know if it was or was not, but, um, before we, are you done?
Yeah, yeah.
Marcia, could you expand on what the AOT and the other development? I mean, all that stuff is old and existing, isn't it?
The alteration to train for me?
Yeah, for the other houses that are already on Meadowbrook. You, someone, someone had commented that with all the other development, it must be close to meeting that and you said close but not.
Yeah, that, that, those are existing for, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it would not be, I know, um...
I didn't know if there was another development over there that we didn't know about, that was a.
No, no, usually I think it's within five, if there's like within five years, then they kind of add them to the other one, but we haven't had anything out in that area.
It would have to be the same property owner too.
Yeah.
Okay, that's why I got confused by the comment.
If they're totally separate property, it's not just like an LLC.
Yeah, right.
Totally different entities.
Because that's the kind of stuff, you know? You always say, oh, we split it up last week and.
Well, they're getting, they come on.
Yeah, I was going to say, they catch, they catch them on that one now.
Yeah. It's not something we do. But I just want to make sure I have, um, so we're looking at wildlife study, um, a landscape for the frontage of the, um...
Anthony's abutters, yeah. So I was thinking along the road, there's certainly, for the road footage, a visual buffer there, but also you need to look at the buffer area.
We'll call it a buffer repair if maybe it was clear-cut in that 100-foot and now the.
And we understand that was, had nothing to do with your project, but that 100-foot buffer there, I mean, there needs to be, and it is in the regulations, that the board can decide that buffer, visual buffers are needed, uh, and, and so we're actually.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look into that.
On both, the, I think it's, like, we're in the west and east side of the property.
When you cut the trees, people overestimate what 100 feet is.
That's so.
Yes, I understand. I'm a carpenter, I still have to pull my tape measure all the time.
And then the, uh, the third major thing I saw recall was the traffics, traffic analysis.
Right. Start with the, the short traffic and take a look at it, but you need to get information and we're asking that you be a little more expansive in your considerations and analysis with respect to that corner.
Yeah, the intersections are really, I mean, a traffic analysis can vary from looking at all the intersections within a two-mile radius to this intersection and the, um, attached roadways, which I think would be, be more appropriate. I used to live in this area, not in Barrington, in Nottingham on Mitchell Road, so I know this quite well. Um, and it is beautiful neighborhood, which is why people want to live there. But, um, we'll look at that and work with the traffic engineer to design the best intersection for this area, which may be a three-way stop, maybe even two-way stop, maybe one-way stop. And then we can discuss it with the board and road agent, come up with the best solution.
Right. And, and it sounds like, given the current traffic problem on that particular road, the use of the cut-through, speeding, damaged property, uh, the right design, you, you love.
Well, I think if you're speeding on this road and correct me if I'm wrong, and you've never driven on this road.
And that was the most twisty road I've ever.
It does not, but yes, you're right. We must do what we can.
I've never speeded, I usually lost twice going through there and I never come out where I want to.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm definitely myself.
I just use the traffic.
And then we'll look at the snowmobile trails to make, to see if there was.
And it says point two, point two, parentheses, three required too.
Correct. The wetland there, yeah, that's, well, they'll have to look at the, the wetlands requirement for the open space as well as the actual, get a confirmation on the property line and try to come to.
The double area.
Right.
Yeah, it's not just the wetlands. You had.
Right.
You know, 10,000 square feet of ledge, that also there.
Right. All right, the river, creek, water. Yes, come to show them. How folks. Um, is there, I, um, any other questions?
If you wanted to, I know we closed, you closed.
Public comments closed, but I'd be happy to hear it.
As a father, will we be notified as far as your parents?
Yes.
This, this is a minor area, so we have not just submitted anything to the planning, to the planning board for closing, so they're just getting input. So when we come back for, um, the actual subdivision itself, then you will get notified. I think you can notify again, right?
Yeah, you're going to, actually the board, the one, what's the board's going to have to do be, because this was basically a design, people was kind of preliminary design, everyone was notified. The board will have to vote to clo- vote to close that, close the design review for this. And then, uh, everything will be, it's going to be all new, you know, whatever they, they're going to be notified again.
When they file the application, they also have to not notify all the abutters, just they did. Have you gotten the information you came? All right, I will make a motion to close the, uh, designer queue for 270, 273-2 and 3, semicolon, 49-gr-21.
Motion by Jeff Brand, second one handing out, we'll start at the end again, Andy M.
Andy M.
Andy M., I.
Ron Allard.
Allard, I.
Jeff Brand.
Brand, I.
James Dennis and I, Candace Crans.
Crans, I.
Andy Knapp.
Yeah, bye.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, die.
Design review is closed, thank you so much.
Thank you, Gene.
Have a great night. Anything? Motion to adjourn?
No, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
On the parking thing, brought up a number of times, I'd like to make a formal motion. Given by table six, parking standards on page 42 of the site plan regulations, change the one-space requirement in all categories of the residential section to two spaces.
I know you brought it up, but typically, what we would do is you would draft up the changes, and then we can look at it and have time to think about it, and then...
Then have a public hearing.
Make a motion to vote on it.
That's, so...
I've brought this up like 17 times, what's the step, what's the right step?
Because that's zoning, right?
No, that's site review, so usually they'll do, the board will do, and they can do, like bundle them, I know Jeff and I were going to work on some, and the other thing is, I know you want to do that, come up with the justification, the background, you know what I mean, the background, I mean, but...
Backlaws subdivision?
Well, no, 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 I mean, there's...
No, she's saying, there has to be, you not only have the proposal changed, but also you have to state what's the purpose and reason for it.
Yeah, why, was there, have we had a lot of incidents where we didn't have enough parking, has, I mean, those are the kinds of conversations that the board should have, as opposed to, let's just change this or change that.
We have to open up changes to the subdivision regulations or site...
You gotta have, you have to have a public hearing on any of those changes, you have to have a public hearing, it can, it can be done in a meeting, but you do have to have a public hearing, and I suggest you do so.
So the zoning regulations, I mean, we can propose some, but anybody can propose some, those go to the voters, these regulations we can improve, but we still have to have a public hearing on the table.
So, put this on the agenda for next time?
Good, you got any other ones you want to put on?
Well, the ones that correction, I might, at least on mine, on the zoning ordinances, on page 32, the highway overlay, mine says 126, and I'll pre-statement 125.
The zoning ones are going to have to go to the voters, so we can make a list, and that's going to have to go to voters.
Okay, that was just, I think it's just a correction, it said, mine says 126.
Oh.
We should say 125.
On which?
On page, yeah, on zoning, page 32, the highway overlay, it says 126, and I'm pretty sure we need 125.
Yeah, we probably do.
Oh, there's also 126.
126 is Church Street.
Yeah.
From Route 9 over to 202.
I'll have to look at it more closely, we'll look at it, okay, so we'll see what it is.
So wait, we can change the...
So for Ron, when we look at everything? You need to come in with a proposal saying, here's the wording, here's the justification for the change, then the board can discuss it, but we also have to put it in an announcer at, you know, for a public meeting, so that we can get public comment. We can do the whole thing in one meeting, and we can modify it, like we can, you know, we can make a motion, or what's happened in the past is we made minor corrections, and then the motion after the public hearing ended up being, here's what the edited change is.
Okay, so what would be the next?
The next step would be for you to write it up with with the purpose and the justification, and give it to Marcia.
Okay.
And and it's going to have to go out, because it's a public, it's going to have to have a public hearing, right? Then there's time requirements for that.
There is, the other option is, we can, in the past, we've hammered those details out in meeting, where we write it together.
Purpose.
Right, but we still have to have, but if you feel you'd like to prepare it first, then we can just review it, make corrections.
We can discuss it now, we get it done, but if we can't do that, it's fine.
No, we can't get it done. No, but as far as writing the language, I think he's saying, if we can discuss a purpose, write language, argue, and see if there's support or no support, whether it's today or the next meeting, is entirely up to the board.
Well, language is pretty, I mean, it's just a table, it says one space in three places, it's changing to two spaces, so the language is changing one to two.
General residential standard, one space per dwelling, plus one additional space where we group them.
Just the first one, all three categories, the first one's one space, I'm saying all categories change to two spaces, that's the suggestion.
So you're saying, yes, so currently, what this implies is one space for each unit, that's the minimum, one house, one bed, breakfast room.
Yeah, and I think, as someone said there before, if you get a house, you get two people, you get two cars, so having one space, to me, it doesn't make any sense.
And the thing is, it's almost like, it doesn't match any of the actual real-life situations to begin with, like, we don't have very, we have your people that would have less than one space.
Right, it's just going to be the big developments, that townhouse-type development.
And we're requiring them to have more than one now.
Right, one for each, and an additional one for every...
So what, yeah, okay, here we go back to, what's the definition of apartments? So there's not a lot of opposition, is there? Well, the only reason I'm asking is, so, I mean, I have more than, but if you've got a house that's got a driveway, it's 50 feet long, okay? They don't have a garage, do they, is a 50-foot-long driveway going to be sufficient to meet that new requirement for having parking spaces?
It wouldn't be applicable to an existing...
No, but if you were to, I guess you would say, if you were going to build a new house, and it's got a 50-foot driveway, and it's 10 feet wide, it meets minimum driveway standards, does that constitute two spots? What constitutes two spots? What's the minimum standard to constitute two spots?
I know, I was going to say, I know very few houses that don't have at least...
Right, so, so I guess the devil's in the details here, and it says parking space, and off-street space for exclusive use as parking, a parking stall for one motor vehicle. So what that would say is that if you've got just a 40-foot driveway, I don't know that that would be the requirement, if you said you're going to have two, because they got to be exclusive, exclusively used. So if you got a, if you got a 50-foot driveway, if you park one car at the end, you thought you had your parking space. You can't use the area behind that car out to the road as a parking space, because it's not being used exclusively, because that's your actual access from the parking space at the end of the driveway out to the road.
Yeah, I think no matter how you, even define it, but how you define it, there should be two spaces for people to park. If you get a house, you're going to, you're going to, you're going to have two cars, I mean...
We don't, do we have a...
I mean, I think that's perfectly fine, because that's like a minimum, that's like a minimum of usually of what people even have.
Yeah, and this is new construction, so I mean, we're going to allow people with one space, have a new construction, it just makes any sense.
I don't know what you define as one, I guess, the only time it would come into play is a condex, townhouse-type scenario where it's 12 feet, or what's the minimum setback, it's going to be off the road, looking at everything, what's the closest it could be to the road in any scenario, and if it's less than 16 feet, then that was the only scenario, you'd have one spot.
Yeah, but my other concern, let's say, let's say you use a driveway as a parking space.
What is that?
Right, I mean, we've taken care of the multifamilies and everything through our own approvals, you know, our, as of right now, so, but I don't have any, I mean, I don't see any problem or any downsides to changing it to two, is the...
I mean, if you have a driveway, you can, you know, somebody always gets stuck behind on the car, so if they stop back on the road, I mean, you should have at least two spaces for a house.
But I think what Jeff is saying, how do we define that beyond two spaces? Because if they're two stack spaces, and then I'm not going to block my wife in, she's going to leave in 20 minutes, I'm still parking on the road, and the problem hasn't been solved, so is, we're just trying to change the number, and I'm fine with that, because like Marcia says, it doesn't really impact anything, but do we have any criteria that we're ever going to hang someone up because they had two spots versus, you know, how are we going to define two spots, like Jeff said? I think the only place I'm ever going to see it come into play, that I'm going to take issue with it, is in a multi-house development where there's literally one spot, and clearly that's not enough.
And we can regulate that, so.
I just, I'm not opposed to it per se, I'm just thinking through, like you said, devil's in the details, this is not going to be zero impact if you implement a requirement to have two parking spaces, that is, and that's why I'm asking, if you've got a 50-foot driveway, 50-foot driveway, you could park two cars, but it would not meet the definition of both of two parks.
And you could back out, and you could back in, and you could, I mean...
But it doesn't meet the definition. What you'll start seeing is like, people will put in, when they make it their driveway, they put that dog leg in there that allows them to back in, and they'll call that a parking spot, and the other spot, other piece up closer to the house, the parking spot.
Which I think is nice.
I've got plenty of...
You know, but if you're allowed, you know, that's a jurisdiction.
I agree with you, no, I'm, I think I'm...
I think just make a list of site reviews, subdivision, change it while one, and then you start with it, you only have to have a public hearing, it doesn't go to the voters, zoning is different.
Right.
And I already have some zoning changes, so.
But I want to do the gas station one, so.
Gas station, yeah.
I want to change gas station to not...
He doesn't want drugstores.
No drugstore, yeah.
No Dollar Generals.
No Dollar General, apparently I can't do retail.
Can't do that!
We've only got one zoning change through, four years, five years.
Oh, I guarantee my gas station both rooms, boom.
Yeah, they guarantee a new library.
Yeah.
It's going to be right side.
All right, so, when's our next meeting?
July...
July 20th, 6:30, same place.
So it makes the issue... Before we adjourn, so actually, there is a drawback to more spaces if they're not truly necessary, because that is impervious surface, and I think the answer to the question about paperwork is, if there's a justification for the two spaces, that should probably be written up and made available as soon as possible, is the answer, so the public, and we could see it to know the reasons why this is necessary.
Fair enough. All right, Ron, so I think the consensus to put that on you to come up with a purpose statement and some language, I guess the language is two, and we, what is, our next meeting is the 20th, you said, of July?
Yeah.
Do we have a lot on that?
Do we have a... We won't, no, till the 29th of June.
Right.
Right now, we don't have anything but your minutes.
So...
And that will be a public hearing if we get anything.
What would be?
July 20th.
We got time to make a public hearing.
Yeah, I feel like they might get Chris, I don't know what.
May get larger.
But I don't think, well, I don't think, but I don't think Ron's suggestion here for a change would necessarily take anyone's time.
Historically, as the board goes, it does take quite a bit of time to talk about...
Well, it's already taken another 40 and a half an hour.
It'd be still a half.
And I just, I just made the comment that Ron, is that, yes, he said it a number of times, I've listened to him, I've got it in my head, but because I did not have a formal proposal in front of me, I didn't give it a serious thought, I didn't go look at the definition of parking space, and really faked it through, because I didn't have a formal proposal given. Once we get that, then...
We'll have a formal proposal, give them 10 pages.
You can email it out.
If you remember, that's what we did with the solar zoning change, I did a great job on that, months, and brought it to the board, we tweaked it, I went back, I found a thing again.
He's back, his back, his arm back.
I'm saying that's the process. I don't want Jamie touching it.
How about one page, Ron? I would read 10 if I have to, but how about one?
We can probably, I could probably adjourn our meeting. Yes, we have a motion by Andy Knapp to adjourn, July 20th, second by Jeff Brand, Andy M.
Andy M., I.
Ron Allard.
Allard, I.
Jeff Brand.
Brand, I.
James Dennis and I, Candace Crans.
Crans, I.
Andy Knapp.
Knapp, I.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, die.
See you mid-July, enjoy the 4th, everyone.
Hopefully we don't bring Jamie in, there's people...